And then I will turn it over to Nancy for the roll call and then the pledge to the flag.
Okay, Stanford pledge. Oh, sorry. I think I know that by now. Okay, roll call please.
Mrs. Salzer. Mrs. Salzer? I see she's there. Mrs. Egan?
Present.
Ms. Davenport?
Present.
Mrs. Callen?
Present.
Mr. Hillman?
Here.
Mrs. Lammle? Thank you. And Mrs. Petropolis?
Here.
Stanford pledge, please.
Yes, to flag United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and just as well.
We have, joining us this evening, we have our administrative team on the Zoom call as well as Corey Boaz from Studio GC. And I do believe that Pat Callahan will also be joining us a little bit later. So those are the guests that we have today. And Mrs. Salzer, we do not have any presentations at this time.
Okay, 3.0 approval of the consent agenda. I'm echoing here. Minutes of December 8th, 2020 meeting, open session, and minutes of December 8th, closed session. And then the fight accounts payable. So can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
A second.
And Mrs. Egan?
Aye.
Mrs. Lammle? Mr. Hillman?
Aye.
Ms. Davenport?
Aye.
Mrs. Callen?
Aye.
Mrs. Petropolis?
Aye.
And Mrs. Salzer?
Okay, superintendent's report, 4.0.
All right, good evening, everyone, and thank you for your patience. It wouldn't be the new year without starting off with some technology issues, even when we think we've got it all figured out. I'm very excited for our PTA report. First off, we have our food raiser this month is going to be on Wednesday, January 27th, and that will be my favorite one at Portillo's. So that's, that's always a good thing. And then I also wanted to take off the back of my chair. We, PTA had asked us something that we could do nice for our staff and to bring a little spirit. So we had talked about splitting the cost of getting T-shirts for everyone, and those have just come in and these will be in for our staff to receive when they come back in person on the 19th. And on the front of the shirt, it has our nice logo for the district, which says Leaders in Learning. And then on the back of the shirt, it has all three schools on there. So we're very excited for the entire district. All 203 staff members will be receiving that. So we thank the PTA for partnering with us and providing that for our staff. A great thing that they receive when they come back. For our enrollment report, we're staying pretty steady. Enrollment is at 1,443 students, and we're at four more students than we were last month, but down 14 students from this time last year. So it really is staying pretty consistent. Under 438 positions and possible staffing needs, we have been working really hard. Kathy has been interviewing and interviewing and interviewing for temporary cleaning positions. We have hired two people who will be approved at the next board meeting. Ridge Central's temporary cleaning person will begin tomorrow, and Ridge Lawn's will begin on Thursday. Remember, those positions were, were open because the two people we had hired for temporary cleaning positions had been hired into more permanent full-time roles for us, and they've been doing a really nice job. So at this time, we are fully staffed for our custodian crew as well as the temporary cleaning positions at all buildings. For 4-4, mid-year review of strategic plan and administrative action goals. If remember, back in the fall, it seems already a couple of months ago that we decided as a board that we would hold off on moving forward with any outside consultants for the strategic plan at this time. And we also talked about wanting to make sure that as an administrative team, we continue to look at the plan, continue to see what areas still needed to be addressed. And when we have our January study session in a couple of weeks, that's one of the things that we will come to the board with and discuss really those areas. So we'll be discussing that in just about two weeks. For 4-5, under assessments, there's a lot of moving parts for assessments right now, both at the local level and at the state level. At our local level, we did not end up taking the NWEA MAP test in the fall. We are planning on taking it in the winter, towards the end of January, beginning of February. We're still discussing best options for that. Obviously, the best thing is for our students to take those tests with their teacher. That's not always possible, so we are looking at different options of allowing students to come in who are remote, remote students, and coming in and taking those tests here at school, looking to see how practical it is to allow students to also take those tests at home while still trying to have some fidelity in, in those tests. And I think the big, the big thing will be just to get a benchmark of where students really are. And when we give that test in the spring to see kind of what area we're able to accomplish it and what still needs to be done. We've talked over and over again, and this is not just in Chicago, this is all over the state, all over the country. But understanding that this year, I mean, we're coming up on 10 months now since students were in a regular school setting like they always have been. And, and just getting a feel and then, and an ongoing understanding of what we do need to do to support our students. And so that's what we hope the local assessments will do. There are state-level assessments that every year have to be given. For EL students, that's the access test. And the state kept saying, you're going to have to give the access test normal time, pretty much as soon as you come back in January. They did push that start date back to March 15th for EL students. The IAR test, which used to be the park test, is still scheduled to take place. Right now, the state of Illinois has not filed for a waiver. What I have heard is that they are waiting to see if the new administration even allows waivers at the state level, and then we'll see what Illinois does. I, I'm all about accountability. My, my frustration is when we look at things like the access test and the IAR test, and think about the number of days that our students would have to spend testing when we've already lost a lot of classroom time. I, I am hopeful that the state will at least look at, at filling out the waiver, and I anticipate that we'll have an answer to that probably towards the end of this month. Any questions on assessments?
Now, how many days are, isn't it 10 days that students be involved in taking those tests?
For the IAR test, there's usually about eight different tests. They, they change how many you have to give every single year. A lot of times you give more than one test in a day, but you're talking hours out of the classroom.
Or broken up days at least, too. There's, there's possibly eight to 10 days, just broken up days because of this.
Any other questions on assessments? The next thing that I'm excited to talk about is one book. It is a program that basically provides books for every single family in the district, and everyone gets the same book. Most of the time, you partner up with, with local people in the community, and there's activities that are done. And, and really, it's, it's a way to bring everyone together and to be working on the same thing. And so we have some money that we, we do need to spend on after-school activities, and this will not cover all of the money. But I think it's a great way to bring people together this year, and our people who are in-person will be able to participate. Our people who are remote will be able to participate. And it's really, the biggest challenge I have found when I've done this in the past is finding a book that precares are interested in all the way up through eighth grade. And what, what we're really interested in doing is kind of putting together a group that's going to look at, at books and look at activities, and put to launch this sometime towards the end of March, beginning of April. And it's, it's always been a really fun activity. I know Mrs. Knuthnagle in her previous district did it multiple times, and it's something we're really looking forward to. So there will be more information on that coming soon. For 4-7 and 4-8, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen to give some updates on remote learning and COVID numbers, as well as some of the survey results from what we sent out. So when I show on my screen, I, I won't really be able to see anybody or necessarily hear you. So I'll present and then answer all questions at the end. So this is the chart that you have seen probably since July, that I continuously share with you to show the seven-day rolling average of COVID rates. You'll see from November until really the first week of December, we were, we were pretty high up there, and then it took kind of a nosedive leading up to winter break and has stayed relatively low. We are right now at our lowest point we have been since mid-March. And if you remember back in mid-March, they were not even including probable cases. So you are at a lower, I'm sorry, not mid-March, mid-October. You could argue that we are at a lower spot than we were back then. Right now, our seven-day rolling average in Chicago Ridge is 5.84. And then this is all the different surrounding communities. You see Chicago Ridge in the blue line down there is by far the lowest right now. Oak Lawn, which serves a lot of our students, is also coming in at 10.43. I, I have learned from this data, you see this, when you see every single community here have that kind of dip up at the same time. We like to call that data dump, where the state just dumps all the cases that they've kind of been holding back. And that's why you really have to look at a seven-day rolling average instead of just one or two days at a time. So, but again, we're, we're looking pretty good in Chicago Ridge right now. I wanted to check for the dashboard, which looks a lot different than it, than it has lately, just knowing we have not had students in person. Right now, for three weeks in a row, we haven't had any students that we've had parents call to the school and let us know that they have a confirmed case. We do have a positive student or a positive staff member in the district right now for this week. Students, don't have any students quarantined. Remember, everyone is, is at home, working, remote learning. And then we do have one, we have two staff members, the one who tested positive, and then a close contact right now. So if you look even before we went on our winter break, though, you'll see that, that, that line was, was trending down, which is what we always want to see. One of the things we, the Monday after the new year was requesting any changes that people had, moving to in-person or moving to remote. And if you look at this chart, really, we were all, we had, in many instances, it was almost like a split pool that a couple of people went here, a couple of people went there. At Ridge Central, we had eight more people switch to in-person learning. At Ridge Lawn, we had four. And actually, at Finley Junior High, we had more people switch to remote learning, which it, it's not surprising when you look at the data across the state, you see a lot of high school and junior high students who are choosing remote learning as opposed to, to being in-person. We had 36 people switch to remote learning and 45 students switched to in-person. We also had electronic survey that went out before winter break, went out to all of our families, really just kind of asking for some feedback on how the learning is going for them. And we had 326 total responses from, from all three schools. And a couple of these, I'm going to kind of go through a little more quickly, and then a couple I'll stop and spend a little more time on. Really, you see the pie chart of family fill this out. The most came from Central and then Lawn and then Finley. Then it shows just kind of grade levels, again, pretty well split across the entire district. Instructional model, more people who were in-person filled it out than who were fully remote, so about two-thirds versus a third. And this is where it starts getting what I feel is really important for, for us to look at. And, and I know each building has, has really looked at it, and it's nice where you'll get a big printout and see individual answers and what pre-K parent is saying who's in-person versus a third group parent who is remote. And that's what's really important for our buildings to take a look at. But if you look at it and you kind of break it down, how satisfied are you with the way of learning? I look at it as quite satisfied and extremely satisfied, kind of putting that in the same category. We had around 60% who said that, that they were there. And then if you look at not at all satisfied or slightly satisfied on the other spectrum, and you're looking at about 14%. And then it's really digging deeper into that and reading those comments and figuring out what is it that's causing those. And we'll go over some of those common threads right at the end of this. How difficult is it for your child to use the distance learning tools, video calls, learning applications? And again, if you break that down, 55% say it's very easy or somewhat easy, but 22% say, no, we're, we're having some trouble with it. And again, back to it and looking and seeing that most of the ones who are saying they're having trouble are those younger students. That we can do, the district, to try to make sure that we can improve that moving forward for our families. How concerned are you about your child's academic growth right now? We had about 60% say that they were not concerned or only slightly concerned. But again, we had 21% who say that they're extremely concerned or quite concerned. And when you look at the comments, a lot of that comes from the amount of, of class time compared to what they've been used to in years past. Do you feel the amount of time your child is being asked to spend on schoolwork is appropriate? 76% said yes, 24% said no. And something kind of came out in the comments, a lot said yes, but there were, there were people on both sides who said, my child is getting way too much work, or my child is not getting enough work and not being challenged. And you see those at wide spread of comments. How concerned are you about your child's social and emotional well-being right now? Majority say either not at all concerned or slightly concerned. That was about 65%. And when you look at extremely concerned or quite concerned, you're looking at about 17%, which, which we know, study after study has shown through the pandemic, that many people are having those social, emotional issues rise up right now. Physical health, again, about 80% said that they were not concerned at all or only slightly concerned. About 5% said that they were extremely concerned. Concerned about your child's behavior, a lot of people are not concerned at all. We only had 2.8 who said that they were extremely concerned. 70% said that they are not really concerned or just slightly concerned. Concerned about your child's and peer relationships, about 70%, not too worried. But then you see about 20% are either quite concerned or extremely concerned. And, and that, I mean, I feel that that's not only in schools, but just when we see the lack of activities that are outside of schools to participate in, that all adds to it, and I think it's something that we need to continue to watch, not only as a school district, but as communities and as families, to make sure that we're giving our kids the chance to do that in a safe way. And how concerned are you about your child's relationships with adults at school right now? 70% said not concerned at all, 16% said slightly concerned. So this was, this was nice to see that our, our adults are making a really good connection, whether it is virtual or in-person overall. This was one question I was really interested in, because this is something that even when we're past almost all the pandemic things, parent teacher conferences, the way we held it. How did it work for our families? Because we've heard people say, we'd, we'd love to see that continue. And actually, 42% of the people who responded said, this is what we would want moving forward. And we had 10% who didn't attend it at all, and 15% of those respondents said that they would prefer. So that's definitely a conversation to continue to have moving forward. What would conferences look like even when we are back to in-person? So I wanted to give some of the themes that I saw over and over out of the 326 people. So I pulled some of the comments to hopefully show those overall. And so what was working well with your child's education that you would like to see continued? People talked about the balance of in-person and remote, teachers and students having open lines of communication, morning meetings, meeting with the students, and just talking and checking with them and seeing how they're doing, which is so important right now. I had comments of the teacher doing a fabulous job and giving the child the best experience, given the circumstances. Although I wish kids were at school all day, I do feel like with tiny class sizes and the two and a half hour in-person, my daughter is learning so much more than when it was fully remote. We appreciate the independent work he receives in the morning and the attentive instruction he gets from his teacher. And then a couple more, the daily assignments for asynchronous learning are relevant and appropriate for completion at home. Attending specials every day is working well and is always highly anticipated. Another parent said the hybrid model is amazing. My daughter loves going in-person to learn and see her friends and teachers, because it gives her that sense of normalcy in these unprecedented times. And then the fact that they're in school at least for a couple of hours, it helps. Instead of being stuck at home the whole time, I saw a big change once today, went back for the hybrid model. I'm hoping that doesn't change at least. So those are some things that they said are, are working really well. Now, on the flip side of that, some things that are challenging with their child's education. People are asking for less breaks, just saying that once their kid is on, it's, it's very difficult for them to get back on. People talking about the break in the middle of the day, which we have right now to, to clean the buildings, is, is difficult for them. Internet, internet connections, I mean, just look at some of the issues that we have here, trying to have a board meeting with, with just a few of us, and there's internet connection problems at times. Some parents said that they were afraid that their kids are not being challenged. Others talked about they want a change to full in-person, and physical education requires students to be more active, instead of, instead of learning theory about different sports and games on the computer. And then also, remote learning is very difficult for a child in kindergarten, because of the comfort of the environment, my child cannot concentrate. Not sure how teachers can possibly engage a child any more than they are doing now. And then what we heard over and over again, would love for them to go in-person for a longer school days. Some days, it's hard to get a first grader to get online to finish work when at home with many distractions. And then there was another feedback section that could write just about anything, and there were comments all over the place. But two common themes that, that I found over and over again in those comments was a vast comment for how much they appreciate what the teachers and schools are doing during the pandemic. And I think families realize that, that how difficult it is, just like we, we realize how difficult it is for our families right now, and try to accommodate that and be understanding. And then people want more time in-person in school, that they, that they continue to want that option. All right, let me stop sharing. I know I threw a lot at everyone. I wanted to make sure that you kind of got the overall picture, but also open it up for any, any questions or comments that people might have.
You said there was 300-something responses, but you also used the term family responses. So was that 300-something families or 300-something students?
There was 326 students, so each, each, we asked for a response from each student.
So that's only like 20% or something? So it was like 20% of the total amount of students in our student body?
Correct. Ms. Davenport?
One of the charts about how concerned you are about your child's social, emotional well-being right now. The quite concerned and extremely concerned add up to about a little over 17%, which I find to be an alarming number. I think that is an extremely high number for families to be extremely concerned about their kids' well-being. Are we doing anything to follow up with these families and to check in or to offer something? I'm just, I was actually a little surprised to see that number was as high as it was, because 17% to me is an extremely ni- high number when you're talking about something so serious.
Yeah, so one of the things that we talked about as an admin team is definitely going through all these and looking who needs to be followed up with, with a personal phone call. So that, that is definitely in play. The other thing we've talked about, and Kathy will talk later, about the extra money that is coming from the federal government moving forward. And, and we've discussed, is that an area that some of this money needs to go to? Whether it's, it's finding ways to bring kids in to meet with them, whether it's extra people who can, can talk with them and be available. But that is definitely something from this pandemic that not only will need to be addressed in the future, but is, is being addressed right now, because we, we know that this is not good for kids, whether they're in-person or out. When you see the stresses going on in, in families, that all comes down on kids. And one of the places that kids usually feel safe to talk about that is at schools.
So just based on your answer, and I don't want to interrupt what you're saying, but what I'm hearing you say is that there's at least a definite plan to reach out to these families who responded to the survey in, in, in this particular way, because that to me would require some type of more immediate response to them. I just find it, I just find it extremely scary, you know, shocking. I guess I find it to be a shockingly high number.
Yeah, and I think it's important to, to really have that conversation, because when they, when they mark that down, okay, you know that they're concerned, but you, you need to understand why. There, there's a, a long list of things that it could be, and to understand what resources and supports that we can provide, it's only going to come through that conversation. Any other questions or comments? I'm going to move on to 4.9, which is our statement of economic interest from Cook County. Remember, this comes out every year, and both board members and administrators will need to complete this mandatory electronic form. It comes out usually in late winter or early spring, and it goes to your district email account. As soon as we are aware that it will be coming out, we will make sure that we send a kind of a reminder to everyone. But we do need to make sure that that gets filled out. The next item on the agenda is 4.10 FF-CRA Sunset. This was the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, and this ran through December 31st, and then it expired. And, and we had, everyone kept saying, oh, it'll probably be renewed, probably be renewed. With about two weeks left, we heard that there was absolutely no chance that they were going to renew it. And what this was, it, it really provided employees with paid sick leave or expanded medical and family leave for really a lot of qualifying reasons that had to do with COVID. Many districts are looking to expand and still offer some of these, these benefits moving forward. And I just wanted to let the board know that right now we are i- in the talks with, with CRIA about what, what we can do moving forward. And, and one of the things that, that I see as difficult is if we have a teacher who is in their classroom and we tell them, all right, you are a close contact with someone, you have to stay at home. You are not allowed to come to school. If we don't offer anything and they can't teach remotely, they're having to use their own sick days at that point. And this wouldn't be something that's unlimited. The original FERC had 10 days that was, that was allowed, and that's, that's really what we'd be looking at at this point. We are still in, in our talks with the union. I know their representative has not been available until today. So it's something that we're going to have to continue to talk about, but I just wanted to keep the board updated that we are looking at, at doing something moving forward. Any questions on, on that? Next up is board discussion on the school calendar for school year 21-22. Usually at this point, I've got at least the spring break dates and the winter break dates from 2-18. I do not blame 2-18 on this at all. Everyone is kind of just waiting to see what happens before setting a calendar, so they have not said anything yet. I talked with Dr. Harding, the superintendent there, just yesterday, and he said they're really starting to look at it now, and, and he will send me anything he has when he has it. But so it is going to be a little bit later for us, but we'll, we'll be ready to go as soon as we receive anything, and we'll start providing the board with that information. So I just want to let you know that usually at this time, we have something, but we are waiting on that calendar. I do not have anything for other, so I will turn it over to our chief school business official Kathy for her reports.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Okay, the first thing I'd like to talk about is item 5.1 on the agenda, and that is our cap- Okay, the first thing I'd like to talk about is item 5.1 on the agenda and that is our capital projects update. We have a couple of projects that are underway, so I just wanted to give you a brief update. The one that we're going to be getting done is going to be some lighting upgrades to both our exit signs and our emergency lighting. And that bid will be advertised to the public on Thursday and then we will open those and go with the lowest bidder when that will be awarded. So we'll be looking to bring that back to the board in February to award that contract. And there's possibility that some of that work might be able to be done during spring break. If not, it would be accomplished over the summer of 2021. And then our big project that we have underway is the roofing improvements. And as everyone knows, we literally started talking about this project, I want to say a year, if not a year and a half ago. We've always known that this was going to be a rather large capital commitment. So when we established our capital project schedule, we included the replacement of the older section of the roofs. And the bids were advertised to the public and nine vendors actually submitted bids, which was a very good turnout and it would prove to be very competitive. All of the bidders were invited to submit four different alternate bids. And the difference in the bids was really the timeframe of completion, ranging from all being done this year to them spanning over the next three years. And the lowest bid for the three years, which was really kind of always our intention, came in at $1,954,000. We did also invite our contractors to tell us how much it would be if they did all the work this year. And the lowest bidder was $1,790,000. So the difference between doing it this year as opposed to all three years is about $164,000. Now financially, it makes sense to do it all at one because you're saving 164,000. But that being said, there are costs associated with doing that all in one year. And the most basic is if that money's sitting in a bank account, we're earning interest. The second is if we choose to do that all in one year, some other projects most likely will have to be postponed. And then the third, the third item is the question, if we're replacing all of our roofs now, are we technically replacing them too soon? And does that cost money? And it does because some of these roofs really don't need to be replaced for a couple of years. But we looked at the financial impact of that and the savings of the $164,000 to do that all in one year exceeds that cost along with the interest earned if we put those projects off for a couple of years. And so what I did is I wanted to make sure because, again, in the past, we really haven't talked about doing all the roofs in one year. But with that 1,700,000 as opposed to 3.4 million that we originally estimated it would be, it's a pleasant surprise. It's virtually almost half. And so I did invite both Cory and Pat with us on our meeting tonight in case anyone has any very specific questions because we will be asking the board to approve the contract for the roofing replacements with Knickerbocker at 1.79 million at the end of the meeting. So I'm going to open it up to any questions on that. And if there are no questions, Pat or Cory, please feel free to add anything I might have missed.
The only thing I would add Kathy, and I think you're pretty comprehensive in your review and good evening, everyone. I'm good to see you all. This is a very competitive bid and I think the district benefited from what I'll characterize as the current marketplace. We can't guarantee this is going to be around next year, next fall or the following fall. Number one, number two is Knickerbocker is a very large roofing company. The benefit of having a large roofing company, and that was one of our concerns, having a one company do three roofs in one summer. If they were a small company, they might struggle, they might try to do it with one crew and really stretch the whole project out. But that is not the case with Knickerbocker. They're one of the premier manufacturer vendors. So we have some reassurances, but not only from the contractor, but also the manufacturer. And I think the other aspect of this that Kathy pointed out was timing. Our original plan showed projections and we were escalating numbers and those kinds of things. And obviously, those are something we can't predict. The good news is we don't have to predict anymore for the roofs, which really was, if you looked at the numbers, was the single largest expense the district would face in the entire plan was the roofing. So I'm not trying to talk you into it. I think the district benefited from trying to come up with a creative way to assess, you know, multiple year, a multiple year bid or a single year bid. And I think I think these bids are very reflective of a very competitive environment.
Ms. Davenport? I agree with everything you're saying. I'd also like to add, imagine that any type of interest rate would be such that it would be a great source of benefit right now. I mean, I just don't see that as any type of true productive benefit, so.
And you're absolutely right. We calculated and it was virtually immaterial. Ms. Lamel?
You had said that by doing it in one year that there might be some projects that would not get done. Do we already, do we have a laundry list of some of the items that wouldn't get done? And is it really a problem or is it just timing? And it, you know, I mean, a new roof is, I would consider something that needs to be done, especially with, I know what we've got, but the things that would be put on hold, are they as critical or not?
Yeah, I don't think, and I would also ask Pat and Cory to jump in as well. But I don't think anything from, we always talk about the dryness and heat and cooling. And I don't think it's going to impact anything that that would hurt us down the road as far as building. And we still want to make sure that we're doing some things for our students and including that in every single year. So again, Pat and Cory, I don't know if you guys have anything to add.
I just have one thing to add, you know, in light of this kind of new newfound money, if you will, we're projecting a larger cost, we're getting it for a lesser cost or getting a discount essentially. We would like the time to rework the entire plan and maybe reprioritize some of those items and represent that back to the board after Adam and Kathy have a chance to look at it. Because again, it'll normalize our numbers because the overall total dollar projections are going to shrink by, you know, by a couple, almost to $2 million. So we think it's worthwhile to take that next step and kind of retool it, reprioritize to the board can actually see. But I agree with Adam. I don't think there's anything material that's going to be like, hey, you know, we really wish we had the money to do that. Especially, you know, in light of the fact that we are proceeding with the pilot program and working with the vendors to try to hopefully shoot for that over spring break to get those rooms set up. So everything else that I think the board had set at a priority is still moving along. Some of the other items on there, you know, the due dates or the expire by dates could be adjusted just by reprioritizing.
Ms. Petropolis?
This might be a totally silly question, but right now, some of the roofs need to be replaced, some of them don't. So I think that if I can recall correctly, when we talked about the roofs before, the benefit of the new roofs is that they can apply like a type of coating on it instead of like having to replace the whole roof. This, again, might be silly, but are we setting ourselves up for a very hard financial situation in X amount of years when all the roofs need to be replaced all at the same time? Or is that just wear and tear kind of again and it might stagger? I'm not, I don't know about these commercial grade roofs and the covering and things like that. I'm just thinking about future.
Very good question. So first of all, the roofs you have on there are, the manufacturer is no longer in business. So while the roofs still have life on them, they're out of warranty. So we think they have life. So we're in that kind of tweener stage where we're kind of taking a risk and letting it go. As far as the coatings are concerned, the coatings are roughly half of this investment, right? So we're actually talking about a future cost that is actually smaller than a re-roofing replacement. And the nice thing about the coatings is we can phase that in over three to five years. So in other words, we would extend the life of that roof by 20 years, but we could stagger it so that the expenditure on behalf of the district could be borne over multiple fiscal years.
That's perfect. That's what my question was, like, are we going to have to get them all coated in the same year? And then it'd be like another large expenditure as opposed to staggering it now. But I know that the benefit of costs obviously makes more sense to do it all at once. That was always my concern of, you know, having the same person do all the roofs, the same contractor, things like that. So thank you, that answered it.
You're welcome.
Any more questions on the roofs? Okay, the next item then on the agenda I want to talk about is the Ridge Lawn Playgrounds. During our last meeting, Cory presented three different options and the board had discussion and we decided to move forward with getting exact quotes on two of those. And so the vendor is going to be Team Real and the estimates or the actual costs that were presented are actually lower than the estimate. On the option one, we were presented with a price that is $7,546 higher than the actual. So that option is about $141,000. And the other option that we were interested had an estimate of $164,000 and that cost came in at $156,000. And what we would be asking the board to approve tonight would be to approve the contract in an amount not to exceed the $156,735. And the reason why is we want to now put those two options into the hands of our Ridge Lawn pre-K teachers and students to make the final selection. Does anyone have any questions on that? Okay. Okay, the next item on the agenda is IRS Business Standard 2021 Mileage Rate. As past practice, the district reimburses employees their mileage based on the tax guidelines. And so this year it is going to be 56 cents a mile, which is actually down 1.5 cents from last year. So we'll be asking the board to approve that later in the meeting. And then we always wanted to share with the board the cost of our IMRF employees. All of our non-certified staff who work over 600 hours are automatically enrolled in IMRF. And that's the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund. And the employee needs to contribute a mandatory 4.5% of their earnings towards that pension. In addition, the district has to put in a percentage as well. And for calendar year, they're on calendar year rather than fiscal year, that cost to the district will be 8.36% and that's actually down slightly from 9.15 of last year. So we will see those savings over the next 12 months. And then the interest earned on our investments, oh, they've had enough of me here, is $38,875. And the investment income is earned by Worth Township Treasurer who monitors and invests our funds. And the costs associated with those earnings are $17,265. And that amount is very consistent what it has, as it has been in the past. And then finally, I wanted to share with the board that the U.S. Department of Education has announced the state allocations for the second round of COVID-19 relief funding. Dr. Thorns alluded to it earlier. It's really what they're calling ESSER II, which is Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief. If you remember when this started back in March and April, our district was awarded approximately $600,000. And that funding's use was intended for PPE, for education, for social emotional support, really anything the district needed to support learning. And now the second round of funding has been allocated. We do not know when we will receive the money, but we do feel it will be sooner than later. And we will have till September 30th of 2022 to spend that money. Now, the districts are urged to use that money to mitigate learning loss, close the digital divide and to address mental health needs to students. This is a very broad range of what we can use this for and it's approximately four times the amount we received. So although it's preliminary, the district is scheduled to receive $2.4 million from this grant. Again, luckily, we have until September 30th of 2022 to use this money because it's such a large amount of money. We really need to decide how to make best use of this money. And that's going to take, that's going to take some times and some conversations.
Kathy, I'd like to jump in there. And so obviously, 2.4 million is a really nice gift that we're not expecting. But we also know that there's a lot of hard work ahead to make sure that we can work on some of this stuff with our students. And we're excited to work it and to figure that out. And they're starting to come out some different webinars with ways that we can spend that money because although it is broad, you can't just use it on anything. I do want to temper that with knowing that this year our evidence-based funding was flat. We keep hearing, we know the state is not going to be in good financial condition. So even though it's nice that we're getting this 2.4 million in federal funds, if there's evidence-based funding, that is going to impact us down the road a lot more than this one-time influx of money here. So that stuff we need to continue to look at. Thankfully, lame duck session, I believe, ends tomorrow down in Springfield. And they did pass an education bill that they're still trying to get out all the information for, but there was no change in evidence-based funding in this lame duck section. But that is something that we still need to look at for down the road. But at this time, again, it is very exciting to be receiving the 2.4 and to think of some of the things we can do for our students with that money will be what we're working on moving forward.
Okay, and I do not have any other. And Pat and Cory, thank you for being on standby here to answer our questions. We appreciate your help.
Absolutely, our pleasure. Would you like us to stay on or are we good?
Sorry, Pat, on our end, we missed what you said at the start.
I said, if you'd like us to stay on, we're happy to do so.
I think we're okay. I think you can enjoy your evening.
Very good. Good night, everyone. Thank you so much.
Okay, for old business, we have potential board action to adopt or post for a second reading on board policies. Here to explain some of these.
Yeah, so we, we looked at these policies back in December and the vast majority of them were just five-year reviews on almost every single one of them or updating cross-references and legal references. There, today, there's been no commentary from the community or any other questions. So I would recommend that we go ahead and adopt these policies.
I'll make a motion to adapt those policies.
I'll second.
Mr. Hillman?
Hi.
Mrs. Petropolis?
Ms. Petropolis?
Aye.
Mrs. Egan?
Aye.
Mrs. Lammle?
Aye.
Ms. Davenport?
Aye.
Mrs. Callen?
Aye.
And Mrs. Salzer?
Aye. Okay, request for proposal for RFP for Legal Services Status Update.
Yeah, we just wanted to update, we did, the RFP was advertised to the public on December 23rd. Addition, 27 firms were sent an email with the RFP specifications and that list was compiled from the Directory of School Attorneys and the Illinois Association of School Business Officials Buyers Guide. The proposals were, are due back next Tuesday at 9:00 a.m. Really, the next step in that selection process is to get a committee. And in all honesty, I am hopeful that the entire board would be able to be part of that committee. It would be a special meeting, one of those where you open up the meeting and immediately go into closed session. And in our timeline, we're scheduled to meet the week of February 1st. And so I'm going to send out an email tomorrow again to see who is available that week and to try to get some times that we have the majority of people. And we'll, hopefully then at our February regular board meeting, we'll be able to present, have them present and make a selection or multiple selections for, for. Is this Salzer?
When they turn in their proposals, am I right? Are we going to go through them first and then narrow it down to a certain number of, because 27 firms is a lot? So how are we going to do this?
Yeah, 27 firms is a lot. And when we built the timeframe, we really don't know how many responses we're going to get. We could get four, we could get 24. So the way we, we see it is the bidders can send it to us two ways. They can physically bring us in a copy of their bid or they could email it to us. So how we envision it is once we get all of those, we would distribute and make copies of those proposals and share it with the committee members so they could review it on their own ahead of time and then the committee would meet and go over those.
What exactly is included in the proposal? Because I'm trying to understand, you know, because there's no way we can do all that. Like when we get the superintendent's search, we go through all these people, we narrow it down to a certain amount. I mean, is that similar process?
I'm not familiar with that process, but in the bid specifications, there are exact items that we'll be looking for. So there's very specific questions, but then they need to submit a lot of supplemental information. So the purpose of it is they're all submitting the same type of information and then we evaluate that.
Yeah. 7.1, potential board action to award roofing improvements contract to Knickerbocker Roofing and Paving in the amount of 1,790,000. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make the motion.
I had missed a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, was that Tarzan, Mrs. Lammle? Okay, then Mrs. Lammle?
Aye.
Mrs. Egan?
Aye.
Mrs. Petropolis?
Aye.
Ms. Davenport?
Aye.
Mr. Hillman?
Aye.
Mrs. Callen?
Aye.
And Mrs. Salzer?
Aye. 7.2, potential board action to approve contract with Team Real Incorporated in the amount not to exceed $156,735 for the Ridge Lawn Pre-K Playground. Motion, please.
I'll make the motion.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Mrs. Callen?
Aye.
Mrs. Lammle?
Aye.
Ms. Davenport?
Aye.
Mrs. Petropolis?
Aye.
Mr. Hillman?
Aye.
Mrs. Egan?
Aye.
And Mrs. Salzer?
Oh, okay, did it by accident. Oh, did you get my eye?
I did.
Okay, yeah. My finger was just hanging over it and it kind of, kind of did it on its own. Potential board action to approve a change in mileage reimbursement from 7.57.5 to 56 cents per updated IRS guidelines for 2021. That really hasn't gone up hardly at all from what I used to get it. Okay, motion, please.
I'll make the motion.
Ms. Davenport?
Aye.
Mrs. Egan?
Aye.
Mrs. Callen?
Aye.
Mr. Hillman?
Aye.
Mrs. Lammle?
Aye.
Mrs. Petropolis?
Aye.
And Mrs. Salzer?
Aye.
I'm going to interrupt 7.4. I recommend we drop this from the agenda as we don't have enough information at this time to take an action.
Okay. 8.0 meeting reports, nothing. Any visitors that would like to speak? Anybody? Okay, President's prerogative. I just hope everybody had, was able to have a nice holiday and time away from doing all this stuff, I guess you could say, or for the teachers or whatever, had a little bit of a break. I know I for one couldn't see any of my grandkids on Christmas, everybody was quarantined, so couldn't see them. Did a lot of FaceTiming. So it turned out really well in spite of all that. We ended up having a family Christmas after that, which is my family. So it worked out well, but it was hard not seeing any little kids on Christmas Eve and Christmas Day. Is what it is. I hope everybody else had a very good time and was able to spend with people you care about. Hopefully too, Dr. Thorns and I were talking earlier about the vaccine and teachers are included in the next batch, as is people my age. So hopefully, I'll be getting the vaccine, I'm counting on it. So I think hopefully we can also, I'm using that word a lot because it's all, all we have right now. Once the teachers get the vaccine, I'd like to see, hopefully, again, that everything opens up. So I mean, that, that could be a big, big turnaround for everybody. We'll have to wait and see though. This, you can't plan too far ahead. You have to plan far ahead, but don't expect it to go through because you never know what could be thrown in in the meantime. So we'll just wait and see. Okay, that's pretty much it. So we're going to adjourn for closed session.
I'll go ahead and read, for the discussion of the employment, compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees of the public, public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. However, a meeting to consider an increase in compensation to a specific employee of a public body that is subject to the Local Government Wage Increase Transparency Act may not be closed and shall be open to the public and posted and held in accordance with this act as defined in the Open Meetings Act, Section 2, C1. The discussion of collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or the representatives or deliberation concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees as described in Section 2, C2. The discussion of pending or probable and imminent litigation against affecting or on behalf of the district is defined in Section 2, C11. And the discussion of minutes of prior meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act is defined in Section 2, C21, for the purpose of review, approval or release of such minutes. We will not be discussing any security measures or any safety concerns at this time. Need a motion to adjourn to closed session.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Mr. Hillman?
Aye.
Mrs. Egan?
Aye.
Mrs. Lammle?
Aye.
Mrs. Petropolis?
Aye.
Mrs. Callen?
Aye.
Ms. Davenport?
And I don't have my notebook.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Oh, I'm so sorry. Mrs. Salzer?
Aye.
Do you have paper?
Have any?
That's what I wanted, that's what I wanted to ask. If you don't mind, I mean, I can, I can write it on something else. I don't know if it formally has to be on something special, but I can find something to, to write it on, if that's okay.
Can be, or I can tell Kathy where the notebook is.
Okay.
Perfect. Sorry about that. All right.
Okay, closed session.
Thank you, everyone. If you can give us about five minutes to get set up in the closed session room and then we'll be right on. I'm going to go ahead and pause recording now. First up, 13.1, we have the potential board action on personal consent agenda. Substitute teaching list containing the names of Ashley Myers. We also have Caitlin McCollum, district-wide float custodian, starting 12/20/20 at a rate of 11.99 an hour. Can we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second the motion.
Yeah, Miss Petropolis on the second. Ms. Davenport?
Aye.
Mrs. Egan?
Aye.
Mr. Hillman?
Aye.
Mrs. Callen?
Aye.
Mrs. Lammle?
Aye.
Mrs. Petropolis?
Aye.
And Mrs. Salzer?
Aye.
Okay, notice of resignations, we have Caitlin McCollum temporary quitting position pending approval as district-wide float. 13.3, potential board action to approve increase in starting salaries for paraprofessionals, lunch hostesses and lunch hostess substitutes to $11 per hour effective January 1st, 2021, for the Illinois minimum wage requirement. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Greg? Mrs. Petropolis?
Aye.
Mrs. Egan?
Aye.
Mrs. Callen?
Aye.
Mr. Hillman?
Aye.
Ms. Davenport?
Aye.
Mrs. Lammle?
Aye.
And Mrs. Salzer?
Aye.
13.4, potential board action to approve pay increase for lunchroom hostesses and substitute lunch hostesses to $11 per hour effective January 1st, 2021, for Illinois minimum wage requirement.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Yeah, yeah, Mrs. Egan on the second. Mrs. Lammle?
Aye.
Mrs. Egan?
Aye.
Mrs. Callen?
Aye.
Ms. Davenport?
Aye.
Mrs. Petropolis?
Aye.
Mr. Hillman?
Aye.
Mrs. Salzer?
Aye.
13.5, potential board action on resolution for the destruction of verbatim recordings 18 months and older, May 14th, 2019. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Mrs. Egan on the motion, Mr. Hillman on the second. Mrs. Callen?
Aye.
Mr. Hillman?
Aye.
Ms. Davenport? Mrs. Egan?
Aye.
Mrs. Lammle?
Aye.
Mrs. Petropolis?
Aye.
And Mrs. Salzer? Potential, 13.6, potential board action for resolution for the session minutes from November 10th, 2020, and destruction of verbatim recording 18 months and older, June 11th, June 25th, 2019. Can we have a motion, please?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Mrs. Egan, and I have, it sounded like Mrs. Lammle got it in just before Mr. Hillman. First.
Aye.
Mrs. Petropolis?
Aye.
Mrs. Egan?
Aye.
Mrs. Callen?
Aye.
Mrs. Lammle?
Aye.
Ms. Davenport?
Aye.
And Mrs. Salzer?
Aye.
Hey, we are looking for a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion too.
Okay, Mrs. Egan?
I'll second, Mary.
Mrs. Callen with the second. Ms. Davenport?
Aye.
Mrs. Callen?
Aye.
Mrs. Petropolis?
Aye.
Mrs. Lammle? Mr. Hillman?
Aye.
Mrs. Egan?
Aye.
And Mrs. Salzer? Okay, I wanted to thank all of you for jumping on tonight with more technology issues we had at the beginning. But hopefully we're able to hear everything today and hopefully we have.